Good evening, welcome to the Fourth School Board Budget Workshop. Today is Tuesday, March 19th, and I'm Laura, I moved your chair over there, I'm sorry, just because Noster's not going to be here tonight.
Okay.
So I just went too closer. I'm going to hand over the agenda workshop to Elizabeth Sifis, our finance chair.
Thank you. So Suzanne, I already said it, but welcome to the Fourth School Board Budget Workshop. Materials are available here tonight in hard copy as well as on the school district website. Just click on the budget link at the top of the homepage and the budget calendar as well as all materials are available to you. And I just checked on that today to make sure, and it is. All budget workshops are open to the public, recorded and posted online with public comment welcomed. With regard to public comment and the agenda, the Cape Elizabeth School Department takes very seriously its responsibility for approving a budget that is both educational and fiscally responsible. The budget for any large organization has many components, which in the case of a school system, often generates strong feelings among the community. In order to have a sound budget that the community can support, the board must be able to hear the views of community members and town officials, as well as have the time to consider the detailed expert advice of school administrators and deliberate amongst the board members. To accomplish this goal, the board will be following a structured agenda for each budget discussion. This structure is designed to provide full and clear information to all, allow each person who wishes to contribute to the discussion an opportunity to do so, and give the board ample opportunity to deliberate and come to reasonable decisions. The agenda for budget discussions will be as follows. There will be a sign up sheet for members of the public who wish to speak on the budget that evening. It's right up there at the podium. The public will be invited to ask questions at the beginning and end of the meeting. There will be a time limit of three minutes per person. Speakers are encouraged to submit any detailed comments in writing so they can be fully considered by all board members, including those who may be absent that evening. However, it is fine to speak without having a written comment. Number two, board members will raise their hands and be recognized for the purpose of asking questions or making comments. Board members will be recognized in the order in which they raise their hands, and all board members shall have the opportunity to be heard. Number three, once all board member questions are answered, members of the public will again be invited to speak. Questions and comments may be received by myself or Suzanne via email as well. Go to the Town or School Department website, navigate to the School Board section, and click on an email link to send your thoughts to us. The school board's goals for the 2019-2020 budget are as follows. Number one, maintaining and improving the high quality of education for every student. Number two, careful examination of line items and consideration of the success and effectiveness of the expenditures in order to provide a fiscally responsible budget. And number three, clear and continual communication throughout the budget process. We will hold these goals in mind as we examine each cost center, each department, each school, and each program. When decisions need to be made, we will weigh them against these goals. So at the beginning of each meeting, I kind of like to give a little recap of what we have done already. Thus far, we have been given a big picture view of all the pieces of our school department and how the parts work together to provide an excellent educational experience for our students. We have gotten an ED 279 state funding update, as well as an overview of the school board budget binders. We've heard from Poncove Playground Fundraising Groups, or the group, with regard to their efforts and plan. Also, administrators and department heads have responded to previously submitted budget questions and comments. And those questions and comments were fairly detailed, and it took at least two meetings to do that, so we thank them. We have gotten updates on new proposals that impact the budget. The board has examined staffing and enrollment system wide and at all three schools, and has also explored why we staff schools the way we do. In particular, last week, we looked at all of the federal educational mandates and the impact our staff on our staffing programs and ultimately the budget. I would like to mention that to date, there have been two budget subcommittee meetings involving the chairs and finance chairs of both the school board and the town council, as well as the superintendent and town manager. These meetings have been incredibly positive and productive, with an open flow of information and constructive questions. I extend my thanks to all involved for their participation in this collaborative effort on behalf of the citizens of Cape Elizabeth. So moving on to tonight, we will conclude our lengthy discussion of staffing and enrollment by looking at projected class sizes in grades K through eight and relating them to our class size policy. We will hear any updates and answers to outstanding questions and hear about a townwide generator project to which both town and schools are contributing. At an earlier meeting, the board directed the superintendent to bring the increase on spending down to 6% from an initial 7.8%. Tonight, the superintendent and the administrators will present the revised budget and discuss not only what was cut, but how those decisions were made. So, I'm done talking for the moment. Oh, that's, thank you. I would also like to introduce Herb Hopkins, our interim business manager, and I'd like to thank him very much for working with us.
Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you so much.
Nice to be here, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to any members of the public who wish to speak. Just step up to the podium and introduce yourself. Remember to sign in, please.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Thomas Chaltray. I'm the technology integrator at Poncove Elementary School. Through the nature of my job, I'm fortunate to have a unique perspective on our building. I'm able to see all students, staff, and professionals on a regular basis. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the 532 elementary students in our building, as well as all future students who will attend Poncove. Our job as educators, administrators, and school board members is to do what is best for our students. This is our true mission and our true vision, and a goal that I pride myself in meeting each and every day, to do what is best for our students. In the year 2019, students are facing a new set of challenges, a set of challenges that we must help them to be successful with, because it is our job to do what is best for our students. The largest challenge facing students is social emotional awareness and self-regulation. I'm hoping that the points that I make tonight will go a long way to improve the social and emotional learning for all students at Poncove. When I was thinking about what to say tonight, I found it very difficult to put into words the value of what our fabulous health and wellness teacher Heather Kennedy brings to our school. Our students in second, third, and fourth grade are lucky to have health and wellness once every six days, and in fact, Poncove is one of the only elementary schools to offer such a program. In their lessons, students cover a multitude of health and wellness topics, including the following themes: awareness, executive functioning, and visualization. The program successfully connects students with the only thing every student is guaranteed to bring to school every single day: their bodies, to teach these things. Much like success in math is easier with a foundation of basic arithmetic skills, social and emotional experiences are more successful with a foundation of strategies and mindfulness. In other areas of education and childhood, early intervention has been proven to work. We have at our fingertips the opportunity to provide early intervention and education in the field of social emotional learning by providing health and wellness instruction, awareness, and mindfulness instruction to our kindergarten and first grade students. We would be successfully accomplishing our mission, to do what is best for students. We don't make our students wait until second grade for math and reading instruction. Does it make sense for them to wait on instruction for social and emotional learning? I've been in the field of education for 14 years. This is all I know. As the budget season rolled around this year, I had conversations with a family member who works in the healthcare profession. Much like us, the healthcare profession staffs their facilities with a ratio. They use nurses to patients or beds like we use teachers to students. However, in the healthcare profession, added to this simple ratio, there's a caveat, a term that I was not previously familiar with, excuse me, acuity. Acuity can be defined as the measurement of the intensity of care required for a patient accomplished by a registered nurse. For us, in education, translation, the measurement of the intensity of care required for a student accomplished by a certified teacher. The care acuity for the incoming fourth grade is high. This happens in education. Like the way it happens in healthcare, each unit of a facility brings its own challenges and successes, the way each grade level brings its own. We have the means already to address the high care acuity of the incoming class. We are lucky to have onboard an amazing teacher on our staff already at Poncove, who would love to stay in her current position as a fourth grade teacher. Sherri McInnes exemplifies our true mission and vision. Every single decision she makes all day long is strategically planned around doing what is best for our students. With that mission and vision in mind, I'm hoping a couple of things will be realized tonight. One, that the school board will recognize that the addition of .4 health and wellness will help to build the foundation for our youngest learners' social and emotional learning, something the students of this generation so badly need. Two, I'm hoping that the school board will recognize that the retention of the sixth, fourth grade classroom teacher will help to alleviate the high care acuity of the incoming fourth grade class. But above all, I'm hoping that the school board will recognize that these positive moves in staffing at Poncove Elementary School is their way to show that Cape Elizabeth does what is best for students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. We are going to move on to the conclusion of the discussion of staffing and enrollment. I believe we have a handout?
We do. So included in your packet, and you've got two packets tonight, and this should go in your budget book under enrollment and staffing, for those of you who have the budget binders, is a chart showing projected breakdown of classes K to eight for the 2019-2020 school year. We show a projected 111 students enrolled for K next year. I checked today, and we have 86 students enrolled, so we will be keeping an eye on that as we get closer to September. At the bottom of the chart are recommended ranges for K to 12 according to Cape Elizabeth School Board Policy IIB. So we did the best we could. For the middle school, those are broken down by ELA classes. And you will see that there's, in grade eight, a nine at the bottom with an asterisk. Some of those students have a different math class, some of those nine students are specialized students, so they're not in, at that particular time, in a full classroom. So we pulled those out to do the, to do the average. The average doesn't include those nine students. They're very busy doing something else at that point.
Could I ask a question about, so in eighth grade in particular, it looks like there's a decent discrepancy in numbers in some classes.
So some of that, some of that starts to get into, depending on what classes kids are in. So if they, for example, say they're in an Algebra I class, and there's only one section taught, that might be a large class, which might in turn make a smaller class somewhere else. So that's kind of, that's kind of how some of that looks. I think there's a plan to level that up a little better next year. This was kind of just going up, because this is really this year is seventh graders being pushed ahead.
Yeah.
And kind of, we haven't really hammered out the schedule yet. But I know how many teachers there are and how many kids we have. Some of the thing is, a lot of kids are in some specialized programming, so it's not an even, like swap just to divide that. So that's kind of why, but some of the math numbers drive that. Some kids are in geometry. Someone might even be taking a math class at the high school in eighth grade, so they might not show up in a high school math section, but it kind of gets more into the sections versus just teacher per kid. So that's kind of what that represents.
Thank you.
So these are just projections, projections based on our classes this year, so.
So, I had a question. So we have kind of how we break it down, and of course, Mr. Chaltray made an interesting comparison. I don't know that we would call it caracuity, but everybody's classroom is different, and I can trot out the old story of when I was teaching and I had two sophomore classes, and one class had 28 students in it, and one class had 17 students, and it was the same level class. It was a, actually, a large group of students who weren't necessarily excited about going to college, and, and that's how it was broken up, 17 and 28. The class of 28 was really easy class. It was cra, you would, of course, I walked in there thinking that was going to be my hard, and the 17 knocked my socks off difficult. So it's like, it's, it's really, you know, I know, I take my hat off to Jason and the teachers when they try to work on the balance of a classroom and the mix of the students, because that really plays a big role beyond numbers. So I appreciate that it goes beyond numbers. But knowing that small numbers doesn't always, especially for me, didn't mean, you know, an easier classroom. But I did want to ask, I know that Suzanne has done some research lately, and so as we're talking about this class size guideline, how do we, how do we fare with, you know, people around, not people, but schools around us? Are we?
Of the schools that have class size policies, we're, we're very, very comparable. So Falmouth, for example, if I can remember correctly, they have a target, which is, I believe, 20 students to one teacher, but they have a minimum of 19 and a maximum of 23, so that's, that's ours. Yarmouth has the same range, 19 to 23. South Portland has a range from 15 to 24 or 25. It's low and high, so it's wider range than ours. Scarborough and I think Cumberland, North Yarmouth, they don't have a class size policy per se. They leave it up to the discretion of the superintendent and school board year to year. But it seems that, you know, our range, which I think we thoroughly looked at at least three years ago, has, you know, for the most part, been, you know, what other schools are using, and has worked pretty much every year. So, yeah, that's what I found out.
Thank you. I'm glad that you checked, because I know we're, we're looking at the policy again, and having been on policy committee for a long time, I can share with other members of the board, it, it is probably one of the policies that gets looked at and changed more often than almost anything else. And we used to have a target number similar to Yarmouth, where it would be like 1 to 20 or whatever. And the reason that we moved to a range was that with that one target number, it just felt like we were always out of compliance. Instead, and people, even though when you put this as a guideline, this is a whatever, people read it as a, and so even though this is still, you know, a guideline, at least we're in a, we have a range, and hopefully, we can have good discussion about why we would be outside of the range. And, and, you know, as you look, the full policy obviously couldn't be included, but high school, we really have to consider teacher load a lot more than class size, because that's, that's really the, the benchmark for high school teachers, but.
I should have clarified that these policies that I referenced were from three to five, grades three to five. Ours is three to four, but theirs is three to five.
Right. That's yet another reason why it's difficult for us to compare with other schools, since our, you know, our middle school starts at five, and some people's middle school starts at six, and Jason?
Is it okay to ask a question about that? So, I mean, so Elizabeth, you talked about your teaching experience and, and the understanding that it's not necessarily the number, but then, you know, the board policy has these guidelines, and so what would those discussions look like if we were talking about being out of that range?
I don't know. As an educator, I was never a part of those discussions. I showed up and got my, my, my assignments. I can imagine that, that administrators have those discussions with each other, with the A-team, with the superintendent, and would bring concerns, you know, about a cohort, you know, and would look to address, you know, how to help whatever students need help. I don't, I might not be the best person to answer.
Okay. I was thinking more particularly with the board, so if the board was approached with a proposal that was outside of these guidelines?
Well, I would, I would, you know, I've heard a lot of people speak and received emails about the increase of, you know, the increased effects of anxiety and depression in children has increased socio-emotional concerns within the classroom, the need for more individual behavior plans. I've heard that on a general basis, but I haven't received, nor has the whole board received any data or relevant information pertaining this one cohort, and why, why there's any reason to, you know, break from policy. So, this, this was in the original request budget, right? I mean, it was, it was only five teachers. It wasn't that we said, oh, oh, look at the numbers, it has to be five. You came to us with five teachers. If, you know, there was a reason to change that, consider changing that, I would, I would want input, like, how many times has, for example, the principal or assistant principal gone into these classrooms of the current third grade? How many times have, you know, there've been, you know, incidents? And compare that. I mean, that, that to me would provide some data that would be useful, but at this point, in terms of discussing, there's, it's just a policy, you know, other than, that's all we can go by, is the class, the number of students and the policy.
Okay.
We don't have any other additional information that's been given to us.
Okay, thank you.
I also want to, before, I just want to back up and say that this, this discussion wasn't really geared toward that particular question, although it does lend itself to that question. I just want to share with the board and the public, we, we have had some really in-depth conversation around the high school. Mr. Shedd provided us with a lot of information, and we wanted to make sure we were giving kind of equal gravity to our discussion around staffing and enrollment at the middle school and the elementary school. So I don't want you to feel like you're on the hot seat, or Troy's on the hot seat, that sort of thing. It's just, we haven't gotten to talk about, in depth about staffing and enrollment there yet. Hope.
So to address the question, I think, is, don't quote me on this, but my understanding is that within, within the policy range, if, if the district is operating within the policy ranges, that's within their purview to make those decisions, and the budget is presented to us, and, and we should say, is this within the policy range? And if it's outside, we, we may have a question. But if it's within it, that was the district's decision. That's, you know, Donna, in consultation with the administrators, comes up with that proposal and presents it to us. So I don't think, so, and I think Suzanne said, I'll repeat, that we were presented with this proposal for the fourth grade without any specific details about this specific cohort, and I don't know if that's even possible for us to get into that detail, but tonight, Tom's comment about the caracuity being high for that grade, that's the first time that I think we've heard that in a, in a workshop. So, and, because I've been listening for it, and then, what is it about this cohort? What are we talking about? So, but when this, this discussion has come up, and all the emails that we've received, I've appreciated, and I've read every email, and I absolutely agree with the, the theory that we need to be careful about class size, and it's the, the most important thing at this, you know, at the, in the early education level. And if we're going through this process and using our policy and looking at what we're proposing this budget, I think the elephant in the room is, is kindergarten and first grade. So I, I think it sort of drew our attention to it. We were, you know, if we're going to be analyzing this and saying, you know, where is there room for improvement or concern, it's, it's the kindergarten cohort, which I think we're sort of rolling the dice as to what might happen if we get a higher than expected enrollment. We're, we're already pushing the top of the limit, and in first grade, we're exceeding it. So, not exceeding it, sorry, we're, well, I'm sorry, we're exceeding it in kindergarten, which is, to me, that's the last thing, the last place we should look for flexibility at the high end, is kindergarten. That's sort of, that's the groundwork for, for everything that comes after it, and I think, you know, if we're going to have a discussion about bumping up our, our numbers and increasing staff, it should be focused on the kindergarten. And I'm, I'm open to, to a discussion, further discussion about the fourth grade, but we haven't heard anything specific, and already, it looks, it looks okay. I think we're, you know, we're at the lower end of the, of the, of the limit, and I think my understanding is those class sizes will be smaller than the current fourth grade classes. The average, so objectively, in that, without any other context, the fourth grade looks healthy to me, and, so, and I, I do want us to, I want, I want us to talk about kindergarten and first grade. Not to hijack the fourth grade discussion, but I think it's worth, you know.
Thank you.
Did it anyway.
Thank you.
Well, it's part of the reason why we want to start including this, this kind of data in our packet from year to year, so we can really have a look at the numbers and get, get a broad view, so.
And also, you know, for this year, I think this is great, but as we move forward, to include, include a historical perspective as well, because if it proves that, you know, we're pushing the boundaries every single year, then something has to change, and that would, that would be policy.
Especially because when you look at the grades ahead, so that, okay, so fourth grade, we say, this one teacher, we're going to have five instead of six, but then those third graders are going to be moving in, so now we're going to then, I know that's looking ahead, but then now we're going to add another teacher there, but then the following year is going to be low, so now that teacher gets, I just wonder what does that do to teacher morale to switch around year after year? And I'm sure that was taken into consideration by Donna and Jason when you discussed and made this to begin with, but the switching year in year, and I wonder from a history perspective, is that something that just has occurred over time? And I'm new to the school district, so maybe it's just like, Laura, that's what we do every year here? Or is this something that is new, looking at switching teachers and then looking ahead to sort of switch every year based on the class size? The perspective, does anyone?
Donna, can you talk about staffing at an elementary school?
It's common practice at most elementary schools, you adjust. Of course, sometimes you have double classes with more students, sometimes you have less, and you adjust your staff accordingly. I'm not sure what the history is here.
I'd be interested to just hear, hear, how, how has it gone? Is this something?
I know we always like, I mean, it's, it's preferable to save teaching positions and absorb and move people rather than have to let people go.
Mm-hmm.
I think the last thing that we like to do is let people go.
Yeah.
And that, that does have, I believe, an impact on morale.
But when, I was looking at some studies when it looks at teacher effectiveness, and they move different grade levels, how the effectiveness does go down for the first two years in the switch. And of course, it depends on which teacher you're selecting, but if you just look at like large population-based studies, the effectiveness does go down. So I just, you know, looking at the, the next year ahead, it looks like a big, a bigger class size, and I guess every year there's, that's going to be on the table.
Probably it's not, it's not ideal. I think it has been done. I know the year my current eighth grader was in third grade, we, her class is a smaller class. My daughter, who's in ninth grade, her class is a much bigger class. So, there is similar, I think the current seventh grades are pretty big. So I think in the middle school, we maybe see it a little bit more with teachers moving around to adjust to the class sizes, but there is history of it happening in the elementary school. Susanna?
I just want to add, Laura, that as Kimberly said, ideally, people could stay in their grade, but especially in the elementary level, you know, they're certified, is it K-2 or K?
K-8 usually.
So, but their focus is either elementary or middle school usually. And, uh, my daughter's calling me, I just lost my train of thought, but let's see. But as a, but as a school board, we have to, we have to look at all the variables and it's not just what's most effective, how can we make a teacher most effective and retain everything from year to year? That's part of it, but the other part is, we have to answer to the taxpayers too. And if we have more teachers in one grade, then sometimes we have to shift. And this is one of those years that fortunately, because of retirement, we can, we can shift a teacher without losing a teacher. And I think that's the thing that we have to not lose sight of also here.
And it's, I mean, it really, I think the, how you staff a building is really up to the principal. And we have to, we have to trust that our principals know their building the best, they know their staff the best, and they can give us their best recommendations on the circumstances in their buildings that we, we don't work there.
Right.
We don't know, but we have to trust them, that they do. That's kind of how, at least how this board likes to do it. We don't like to get too down in the weeds and say, Troy, you need to make sure that this person teaches this class and, I think that becomes meddlesome. No, I don't think you would. But it's, I agree, it's a tricky walk and I appreciate, I actually appreciate Hope bringing up, I have continually kind of, in a soft way, kind of asked about kindergarten, but I am actually pretty concerned about the kindergarten numbers being out of range already. And so usually when we go out of range, we like to have a discussion, why are we comfortable with it being out of range? Is that, am I giving voice to your concern?
Yeah.
All right. Why are we comfortable with it being out of range?
Currently it's at eighty-six though, correct?
Yeah, that, um, average class size is based on the one hundred and eleven, which is projected, but currently it's eighty-six that are enrolled. So, we will watch.
Well, what was the, do we know what the registration was this time last year? No, it's hard to remember.
It was about right what it is now.
So we're using the naive model of prediction, saying it's going to be what, the same, it's a, the what it was yesterday will be what it will be tomorrow. So, it was one eleven last year, so most likely, it'll be one eleven this year. That's how the number's being.
Perhaps, and the one eleven is high. So, you know, I mean, we predict that it could be, but it...
I think that would be our ceiling, probably, our prediction would be.
Right, the ceiling prediction. I don't think we'll really know until into the summer.
Yep.
But, but we are, I mean, so this past year, I mean, it's spilt milk in some ways, but we went over class size for kindergarten by, you know, one student.
This current year?
This current year. So, have you heard from the kindergarten teachers, I mean, about, anything about that?
Yes, it's not desirable. It happened very late and as we moved into the year, more kids moving in. But the classes, I mean, I would, we wouldn't, I would hope we wouldn't start another year in this situation.
How late did it start?
Well, we were, we were up, when we started school, we were, right before school started, we were in seventeen eighteens.
I think we had one class starting with nineteen.
One class started with nineteen. We had, at one point, we had seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and then now we have multiple nineteenth's.
Yeah, well, I agree with Hope that, and I know you're going to do this, you're going to watch it very carefully, but I, I wouldn't be comfortable with repeating this year, you know, having nineteen in the class for kindergarten. You know, and I know we don't have a lot in the contingency fund, but we have enough for one more, right? Yeah, so.
That's what I was going to say. If it gets to that line so that we don't head over the policy again, can we tap into the contingency fund?
We can.
Just for the public to be aware of that, I think it's important.
At what point do you think that you and Jason would consult and pull the trigger on?
I would probably think about the second week in August, probably.
And look at things and, yeah.
Depending, you know, if we see in the beginning of August that we're way over, then of course we would do it then.
And I understand it's hard when we have students, and we welcome them, we're happy they move into the district, and that's not easily predicted, but if we're already nudging the ceiling, that might be something to consider if we're, if we already have a class. To Susanna's point, if we started out the school year with one class at nineteen, you know, do we want to repeat of this year? And I would say no, that we don't. So, is there anything? I do, I want to just, I guess reiterate what Susanna said. Going forward, we would like to try to kind of have another chart where we can have some historical data. It would be great even if it was teacher by teacher, because the other thing that we want to make sure is that a particular teacher isn't getting overloaded or having a heavy load every single year if, you know, and if that person, you know, isn't one to necessarily communicate or, I don't want to say complain, but communicate that, you know, I've had some rough classes and I've had some really big classes, that sort of thing. We also want to make sure that, you know, that the teachers are also, you know, if that kindergarten teacher who had nineteen is also getting nineteen, you know, over and over again, that's another concern that the board would like to be aware of. So we're going to ask principals to try to help keep some historical data going forward for these budget discussions. Just a shot over the bow right now. So, does anybody?
Thank you.
I'd just like to go back. I agree with everything, all the comments made about kindergarten. And I'd just like to go back to the fourth grade and I think all of us have read the emails and heard the comments and have a tremendous amount of compassion and totally recognize that the needs of the kids are the most important thing. It's a very delicate balance in a budget where we don't have the luxury to have everything that we want. And, again, we definitely want to support the social emotional needs and recognizing the increase in anxiety and depression is making it more challenging to teach and, you know, we would love to make all the class sizes a little bit smaller and bring down the teacher load and everything like that. But I just want to reiterate that we don't have any awareness of any data, any information to show that this incoming cohort needs an exception to the rule. And when we don't have the information, we can't stray from policy because it's a policy that we've worked on really hard and believe in. So, I just wanted to reiterate that. And it's not that we are not supportive, or I'll speak for myself at least, and it's not that I don't believe another teacher would be beneficial. I do. But with the delicate balance of where the money goes and with the delicate balance of the responsibility to the taxpayers, when there's no proof of it being other than other cohorts, I feel like our hands are tied with no reason to switch things. So, I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you. So, moving on.
So, do you want to go into questions and answers?
Yeah, okay. Are there, I don't, Susanna, I don't believe we received any.
We didn't get any questions, but there was a question about the fund balance.
Yes.
So we might want to talk about that.
Yes.
So, in your budget blinders and your, under budget tax implications, oh no, sorry, under funding tax impact section, that's what it's called, in your budget binder, you'll see a sheet that says budget tax implications, FY twenty. And this is a history of the fund balance since two thousand fifteen, sixteen?
Right there.
Did you find it? Okay. So the fund balance that's included in FY twenty revenue is three hundred thousand, which is a reduction of a hundred thousand from last year. So, the fund balance is the carry forward from the last year. So, I don't know, did you want to discuss this?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about, and I'd love for Herb to correct me if I get anything wrong. So the undesigned fund balance or unexpended fund balance is really the amount of money that is budgeted for but isn't spent because of, you know, different cost savings or maybe we hired, we, you know, we projected that it would cost X amount of money to hire a teacher and it costs less than that, we got someone at a lower step on the scale, or something like that. So all those savings throughout the school year go into the unassigned fund balance? Is that correct?
Basically, it's a combination of excess budget with expenditures and revenues. So your revenues may have come in higher than you thought. You don't have a lot of other revenue accounts other than subsidy and taxes, so you really don't have a lot of extra money in revenue. But it's basically what's left over at the end of your budget. If your budget's twenty-five million dollars, you spend twenty-four, five, you've got half million dollars left. And the state requires you to recapture three percent. If you go over three percent in fund balance, it'll start reducing your subsidy.
But it's also my understanding that it's standard or appropriate practice to try to keep one to two percent. So it's that balance of not going too high and not going too low. Am I correct about that? Okay. So, and typically, at least our school department, and it may, it may not be every school department, so Donna can help me and Herb can help me, but I think that school departments use the unassigned fund balance to alleviate the tax burden the following year to help, you know, reduce, reduce what revenues have to be raised by pulling, you know, some money out of that account and then drawing it down to kind of an appropriate level. That's what we have done here. Is that kind of a standard practice in school districts?
Out of the four districts I worked for, Brunswick, Scarborough, and Portland and Yarmouth, Yarmouth was the only one that didn't, at the end of the year, if we had funds left over, we put those into reserve accounts, either maintenance reserve. We have like a fund for the turf field for future payments, replacements, so we have five or six different reserve funds. So we were allowed to take whatever those funds were and to allocate them onto reserve funds, so we had no fund balance.
Really? Interesting.
But the other towns I worked for did have significant balances.
Thank you. Something to think about. But our history has been to pull money from the unassigned fund balance. And what I think people who've been on the board for a little while can talk about is that we have drawn the fund balance down quite low and our ability to absorb further cuts in state funding, we had three in a row, and so each year we were trying to really mitigate the tax impact to our community members and we really went quite far in pulling money out of the unassigned fund balance. So the reason that board members wanted to kind of just bring this up tonight is we can't continue to draw it down as far as we possibly can go and hope to kind of try to keep an even keel for the future. We need to be able to be somewhat cautious. We did, we got a little bit extra, it sounds, thirty-three percent sounds like a big number, it was around four hundred thousand dollars. In a, you know, twenty-something million dollar budget, it helps a lot, but we don't know what next year brings or the year after that. And so, having, you know, a healthy fund balance in its appropriate range, not in the range where we get, you know, cut back by the state, I think is important and we need to kind of remember that as we're moving forward. So it's just kind of one thing that I, Suzanne and I both wanted people to just be aware of and if they had any questions.
I think it's interesting to hear what Yarmouth has done. You know, what has happened in the past several, I think maybe every year that I've been on the board. If we end up getting a little bit more from the state after we go to vote, it goes directly to the taxpayers to lower the impact. And so, you know, one thing I would like to see shift is, is if we have a fund balance which is within the range of one to two, if we are going over two, maybe we, maybe the town council and school board should consider, you know, what, if there's, you know, if there's excess after the state subsidy comes in after June, we know what to do with that, if there is excess. Should we put it into reserve funds, like for facilities, or should we put it back to taxpayers? I feel like it's a discussion that can and should be had. But certainly, I think that it's really important to keep at least that one to two percent in the unassigned fund balance. And if we're drawing into it year after year, we're eventually going to get to zero if we don't get excess put back in, if I'm making sense. I just think it's another opportunity for the sub-finance committee members to talk about.
Yes, thank you. And that's an interesting point about if we happen to get any excess funds for education. In the past, we have had a hold harmless clause as far as if the state gave us less revenue, that the town would help cover that. But typically, any, anything excess that we didn't plan on, there hasn't even been any discussion, and so I appreciate that. And my understanding in other districts that there's usually language for the voters.
Yes.
Can you, are you willing to talk about that a little bit?
Well, it was just, it was a Warren article on the ballot and I don't know if that's typical for, in the districts you were in, but the voters decided what to do with any extra money that came forward.
In Yarmouth, it was, it was an article in Yarmouth at our public meeting to vote on that, if any excess money or additional state aid, just state aid, if that came in, it would go to taxes and the residents would vote on that at a public meeting, not a referendum, but at a public meeting.
Interesting. So I know we'd like to have further discussion about that, but does anybody have any more comments or questions about the undesigned fund balance? All right. Moving on to the revised budget.
Okay. So, you talked a little bit about the generator project and I'll just go over that again. Originally, Perry had included two hundred thousand dollars in his capital improvement budget for the generator for the middle school in Pond Cove. This generator would also promote continued connectivity for the library and the town hall when we lose power. Apparently, when the power goes out, computers go down and they have had a problem with losing connectivity during payroll, when they were, when they were trying to do payroll, so that was a huge problem. They had to bring over a generator and connect it. They had to bring over a generator and connect it, something about a fire truck. I don't, I guess it was a mess. But anyway, in speaking with the combined town council and school board finance subcommittee, we developed a project, a plan in which the town and the school district would work together to finance a generator project. And that would address the needs of both the town and the district. So it was suggested that the school budget include $100,000 to go towards this project. And the town would also put in some money to fund the project. So when you see the proposed cuts in the budget, you notice that the generator funds have been reduced to $100,000 from $200,000. So that, that is the proposal based on our discussion in the subcommittee that Elizabeth was talking about. At the last budget meeting, again, administrators were charged with reducing the FY '20 budget from 7.8% increase to a 6% increase, which was approximately $450,000. So we spent two pretty long sessions, the administrative team, reviewing proposed new programs and staff, and even looking at some existing programs and staff. We were really using for our focus, what would, what would we cut that would have the least impact on students and programs? And then what would have the least impact on teachers? So there is a list of proposed cuts in your packet. We had, we had some really deep discussions, and it was the A-team that agreed on this list. We went back and forth many times, and this was the list we came into agreement with. So you have a list of these proposed cuts. And we also added some things to the budget that we had talked about last time, as well as some other things. A degree change came up with one of the staff that we had to include there. So the total of the reductions, adding in the additions, results in a $427,328, or a 6.09% reduction to the budget. Sorry, increase to the budget. So included in your packet is the summary budget that provides the status of, with the major budget areas. We still haven't heard about the range of the health benefits. I spoke to Jennifer at the Maine Benefits Trust this morning, and they're meeting tomorrow night to determine the range. So by Thursday morning, she promised that we would have the range. We've included 10%. We're hearing that the range is probably going to go up to 9%. So if it drops to 9%, then we can drop our budget or our, our budget line, which would reduce our budget by about $34,000. So that would put us right in. So we didn't want to go any further, not knowing that number for the insurance. Hopefully, it won't be any higher than that. So after we get that number, then, we can do a more detailed budget line by line. Still, we aren't going to hear until the first week in April about the, about our particular budget increase. Also in the packet is a list of CIP cuts from Perry. He did attend the administrative meeting. And you'll see the $1,000 reduction for the generator on that list. Pardon me?
100. You said 100.
100, 100,000.
You said 1,000.
Oh, sorry, 100,000. 100,000 for the, for the generator. So if you want to review that list of cuts, we tried to not impact everything on one particular program. If you have any questions for us, please let us know.
I have one question. The special ed filing assistant nurse assistant. Is this the one that we, we had last, this year? So it's, it's eliminating that position and not trying to?
Again, we tried to look at things that wouldn't directly impact students.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that was understood, same person.
Just seeing, it looks like a lot of supplies, books, equipment. What is that? What does that look like?
I'm going to ask Troy to talk about his first.
Yeah.
So for me, it's, it was really an effort to offset the, basically, the amount for the additional French position. So that's kind of what that's equivalent of. The five, so the $6,000 in general school supplies is what that is. And it really works out to about $1,000 per team. Because they have four grade level teams, world language, unified arts. So it's really reducing each of them by 1,000. So the more we divide it out, the less painful it feels. So that's what, just what it is. It's general school supplies. And if you remember, last year, that was a $10,000 cut. So it's not totally just a cut. It's still, in a way, an increase over last year.
That was going to be my question. I needed to, I needed to refer back to.
So that's a $4,000 increase, actually.
Because you put your full funding back in.
To try to maintain, to not set it, establish a new baseline, a new normal. So we, we actually, that represents getting 4,000 back from last year. But it's, it shows a $6,000 cut, because I originally put in all 10. And the same, really, with the school equipment line. Last year, there was a $10,000 cut. Put that back in. This allows me to gain five. But what it really shows for a reduction, the general supplies, like I said, will be divided amongst all the teams, the academic teams. And then the school equipment will allow me to still get one new classroom this year, and it will prevent me from getting two.
Get rid of the unit desks.
Right.
Slowly. I thought about just, I thought about just cutting them in half. But it's a three-legged thing, and it would fall. So that wouldn't work. But yeah.
Yeah, so we, so we're still, so we, we lost the money that we cut out last year, and then?
Only a portion of it. So last year, we cut $10,000 from the equipment line.
Right.
I put it back in as the original request budget this, this year.
Right.
And this reflects, you can either view it as cutting half of it or getting half of it back.
Right. No, I like the positive thinking. I'm just thinking, like, overall, it's probably what maybe the middle school needs, if you were honest in your thinking, is the 10,000 that you didn't get lost there.
That's right.
And the additional 5,000.
And that's really the level we should be functioning at.
Right.
But I think that it's a, it's a bit of a net gain in those two areas, and it allows me to get the net gain of, you know, the teaching position, the third, another section of that. So, so I think that's a win. I mean, I feel totally comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Is it a similar situation at the other buildings, as far as supplies and equipment and that sort of thing?
Yeah. I looked at, you know, high school, a couple of textbook series that we could put off purchasing in the early years, similarly in terms of supplies. It still allows us to do the basics that we need to do and even to expand it somewhat. So I think our, we still have a positive increase, taking into account cost factors, and I'm very confident that our program will be well-supported. We'll just slow the rate of purchasing and replacement of some, some, some equipment lines and text lines and things like that. But we'll be, we'll be, we'll be good.
And at Pond Cove, similar situation. So you notice there's, it shows a reduction in Pond Cove equipment by 5,000. But I actually had increased, I had 5,000 last year. I increased it to 15 because I was going to spend 10,000 on instruments. So I'm just cutting, going from 10,000 in instruments to 5,000 in instruments. So it's still, you know, we're still, we still have our $5,000 equipment line plus five to get half of the instruments we wanted. So we're okay there. And the others, the other parts were shaving little bits. There was, was going to give an additional, as I reported back in January, an additional 2,000 in supplies for our physical, physical education program. I took 1,000 off of that. So physical education program will get what it always gets, plus 1,000 instead of plus two. So I shaved little bits off like that. I was able, mostly shaved off additions for specific equipment that we really wanted this year, and I cut those in half. So we're, we're in okay shape with supplies. Ideally, we would have that money to get those things. But the, the direct impact next year on programming from those cuts is not significant. I think I'll just want to put that 5,000 for the instruments again in next year so that we can have them.
And that did allow you to increase the French teacher position?
Yes.
At both Pond Cove and middle school, and keep the health position then.
People didn't, if people don't mind, I also, I kind of wanted to talk about not just what's on the list, but what I don't see on the list. Because that was, I was concerned, I wanted to hear about the health teacher. I wanted to hear about the lunch aids. So I, may I hear about that?
Sure. So they're, just as, as presented before, so, so they're still in. And in the health.
Four, four lunch aids, or?
I'm sorry?
How many lunch aids?
Yes, four.
All four?
So it's the equivalent of 1.2 FTE, but four people.
And what kind of impact do you think that that's going to have on planning time for, or non-students, however you, for teachers at Pond Cove?
So it will have significant, it'll allow us to keep our supervision ratios at lunch and recess, but bring the, teachers will each have, each have more, a little more than 30 minutes a week additional planning time from this.
Great. That's great. And lunch breaks without having to supervise and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
And how about the health teacher? What impact will that increase in that time?
Right. So, so the increase in that will offer really, a really great service to our kids while freeing some other folks up that are in our allied arts schedule. For example, our math interventionist is in our allied arts schedule right now. And that would relieve that need, and that would increase Tier III RTI support for math.
I just, I just want to comment on the removal of the receptionist. I, I think that that was probably a, a good way to go, to make some savings. It, it helped solve in part, a part of a problem, but not entirely, and at that cost. You know, I know that, that, that might be disappointing to some people, but I think it was too much of a makeshift solution.
If I could speak to that just for a moment. Over the past few months, in working with our resource officer and, and meeting with the police chief, we feel like we really can work with them and review and revise our protocols and really do a good job of, you know, given the facility we have, continue to do a good job of keeping the building safe. So we're feeling pretty good about that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just want to add a comment. I'm happy to hear that the four lunch aids stayed in. I'd, I saw somewhere earlier that we, there was a two proposal, and I'm happy that we went to four, because I think that's really money well spent. So glad to hear that. I had a question about, so we have the math teacher resignation. How does that play in with the computer coding and the Latin teacher? And I get those all, you know, can you help us out with that, Jeff?
The way the budget is structured right now, the Latin will go, essentially, that's a wash for the addition of a computer teacher. It's actually a little bit less costly to have the computer teacher than the Latin teacher. The loss of the math teacher position will, I don't know how it's going to play out. Our current computer program, computer programming teacher, who has some good connections in the community, actually thinks it may be an advantage in hiring to be able to advertise a part-time position, so that a person who has those skills can do some part-time in a contract, in a, like an independent contractor role. I'm a little bit skeptical of that. I think we may pay a bit of a price in terms of not being able to combine it with a math teacher position, to hire a full-time position. But I think the trade-off is, is a good one, and my guess is will for somebody who'd be, will do a good job with that. The trade-off for the loss of the math teacher is, in terms of class sizes, it's, there's no, there's no bad results. What, what it does mean, the immediate impact is for next year, is that we will only have half the periods covered in the achievement center with a math teacher.
I have a question.
Yeah, Laura?
Jeff, so you're looking to hire a full-time computer programmer that, no, half, the?
Two fifths.
Two fifths?
To teach two classes.
To teach two classes.
Yep. The equivalent of two-year-long.
So it's not the, the individual that's doing that role now?
Correct. The individual who's doing that role now is the full-time technology integrator.
Right.
She's simply teaching it because she wanted to get computer programming off the ground in the high school, and she had those, that set of skills to do it.
And currently, you're looking to hire that person now?
So if the, if the board funds that position, then I would be advertising for a two-fifths math teacher. Or two, I'm sorry, two-fifths computer program.
Which would allow the tech integrator to go back to actually be a tech integrator, which we need. I guess, I think.
You got it.
I'm kind of sad that Perry's not here, because I just had a question about how the painting, there are certain painting cutbacks, and I'm just curious, how are we, like, how do you cut 4,500 out of the third grade wing in the new, like, I'm curious.
Like, maybe there's not new shades, but they're painting portions.
Right. I think it was the shades.
Maybe they're, I'm sure they're getting painted out, but maybe not new shades or something.
That, that is what he said at one point, the shades.
It makes sense with the pricing.
So the, but the, the classrooms and the hallways will still be freshly painted?
That, yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak for him, but that's what he said. Yes.
You're on the spot.
He talked about that and about just still continuing, as always, to replace broken shades, but not upgrading shades and doing the entire, all the rooms.
It looks like there's a similar thing going on in sixth grade. The sixth grade wing. Suzanne?
I'm concerned about, well, I do wish Perry were here, because I would, I would say, what's going on? Why, why are we cutting the roof repairs for the old building in the middle school? Are we just, are we saying?
We're not.
There's a zero there.
Oh, never mind, because I was going to say, why are we cutting that? And why are we cutting the administrative offices? But we're not. Okay, never mind. Yeah. The carpeting, I think, is a good idea. And because, you know, if we do go through a renovation at some point, things are going to change. Okay, sorry.
So I'm appreciative of our opportunity to have conversation with the town manager and the town council chair and finance chair, because we, we were able to find out that while the school department was looking at a generator project that would benefit the schools in the town, the town was looking at a generator project for the Thomas Memorial Library as well. So we were able to kind of talk about the opportunity to have kind of a whole project where, you know, everybody is benefiting from this project. And I think that they're going to, I think that while the, the cost for the actual units don't change for a project, but a combined project like that probably means, and again, I wish Perry was here, but I can assume that, you know, there can be one RFP process, and there's a possibility of cost savings, because it's really just one, you know, it'll be one project, and so you won't have two different companies and, or two different crews or that sort of thing. So I think there's going to be a cost savings there and an opportunity for everybody and and an opportunity for everybody in town to see a benefit from the overall project, so.
I just want to add to that, especially with Jamie here, that the improvement in this budget process by virtue of collaborating more with town council and the town manager has made this budget season so much less confusing about what to expect. It's been so much more productive. I think the, the flow of communication both ways is helpful to both sides. And I just want the public to know that, you know, we all, we all agreed last year around this time that we would do things differently, and we have, and, and it's going really, really well. Just want the public to know that both sides are working really hard to communicate and, and work as a whole.
On another note, I'd like to just remind everybody that we have a big ticket item in the budget, the needs assessment, which was voted by the board to put in after recommendation from a quite extensive and large and comprehensive committee that decided that they would recommend it to the board. And I just want to thank the administrators. Because of that, there are, there are cuts that you're making in order for that to fit in. And I believe in it, I believe it needs to happen. But I appreciate your willingness to do that and the flexibility. And just as a reminder to the public that that's just a special item that has to be put in according to us into the budget, that's having an impact. So thank you for the work and the compromise.
Thanks, same. True.
So there is a pie chart, the last piece of new, and this is based on the cuts and additions that we just went over. And you see that there's still this huge chunk, 83 percent of the budget dedicated to salaries and benefits. So these aren't the increases, this is the total budget. So just so you know that.
Thank you.
So Thursday morning, we should hear about the range, about the interest for benefits, so.
This person? Oh, for the range, for the range.
Just for the range.
For the range.
Because they're having their nightly reading.
Tomorrow night.
I begged to get the number today, but I didn't. She didn't have it. I just want to say one more thing before we, before we segue. I echo exactly what Heather said, thanking, thanking the administration for including this in our budgets and then taking, making compromises in other, other fields. But I also want to say thank you so much for going back to the table, lowering it to six, you know, nearly perfect six percent. It's not easy and, and it requires a lot more hours and work on everybody's part, so.
It was a great discussion.
Everybody for that.
A great deal of giving and taking and listening. I was really proud of the administrative staff for the work on this.
I know, I want to just, I echo that. I appreciate the approach that, that all the administrators are willing to try to do what's best for all the students and for the district as a whole. And it, it, it just bring, it makes a better feeling for this process because no one, no, we wish we had endless supplies of money. We wish we could just say, go ahead and do it. And so your willingness to have those tough but respectful. And what I hope in the end is really team-building discussions, like, you know, we did this together and no one, no one felt left out in the dark and that sort of thing. Just makes us stronger, so thank you. So are there further? I just want to make sure we, we don't have any further questions or discussion around, at this time, what the superintendent has brought us as far as cuts or things remaining in the budget. And if there aren't any outstanding questions, before I open the floor to public comment again, I wanted to discuss with the board. We do have a budget workshop on the books for next Tuesday. Tonight was an added night. We had four planned, this is the fourth. So next week would be a fifth. So we need to talk about, we won't have the health insurance numbers yet. We have April 4th on the agenda for a discussion, you know, and basically, it's going to be an update and probably the, the last version of the budget that we will get before our business meeting where we would adopt formally in public.
I'm not even sure we'll have the insurance.
By the night, by the fourth? We're hoping, we've got our fingers crossed.
Can't promise.
But so my question to the board is, do you feel that we need the February 26th meeting? We've had, I'm sorry, thank you. The March 26th meeting, given that we added this meeting tonight. And at this time, there don't seem to be more questions.
I'm comfortable not having it. I have it on my calendar.
So without that meeting, our next, we would next get together at the, we would next regular business meeting? No, we have an April 4th.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, got it.
We have one more. We're hoping to have the insurance numbers by then. We're hoping to have kind of a final, a final look on April 4th.
What if we wait and decide with this range? If the range comes in as expected, then perhaps we don't need this 20, the fifth budget meeting. If it comes in over, you know, hopefully it won't, but maybe we should wait and to hear, to hear that.
When, so when do you think you'll hear the range, you're hoping?
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, a year.
She promised.
Six AM sharp, just kidding.
I think that's not a bad plan of action then, Susannah. If, if we could hear from the superintendent on Thursday, at least what the range is, then we would.
Then you could decide.
Right, but since it's already on the books, we can leave it on the books for now. And.
I just wanted to point out, I don't know if the public has this worksheet, but it says Wednesday, March 26th?
I caught those, I caught it.
A while ago?
A while ago, so hopefully it has been updated on the website.
I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's a Tuesday, not a Wednesday.
Yes, yes. Caught that one a while ago. So that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Susannah or I will communicate with the board once we hear from the superintendent. And I agree that if, if the range comes in kind of as expected, there really isn't a reason to meet. But if the range comes in higher than 10 percent, then the board is going to need to meet and make some tough decisions. So, okay, that's our plan. I would like to open the floor again. Wynne looks like he's ready. You got up last time and, and I thought you were walking around to the podium, so I waited and I waited and then you left. We'd like to open the floor again to the public for any comments or questions. Well, looky here. Who is this?
What would it be without me standing up pretty late? You guys couldn't go home and be happy without coming to the meeting. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that were mentioned. And I also have, I wrote these while I was sitting back there, so I could pass them along. But Heather, and Heather can translate since she knows my language.
No way, I'm off duty.
But would you like them? I don't know if you want the written remarks or not. I mean, I could, I just deliver them, this fine, whatever. All right, so I just wanted to address a couple of things that, that came up. One is that about how transfers affect morale. That, that was one of the things that was mentioned, and they do. And while I understand and respect the board's position of trusting buildings, building principals to staff their buildings the way they see fit, moving teachers through involuntary transfers not only damages morale, but as board member Donino pointed out, the overall effectiveness of the classroom teacher may be affected, which of course affects students. While the jump from grade to grade in high school isn't as big a deal, the jump in elementary school is huge. With that said, teachers do appreciate the board's efforts to save teaching positions. Touching on this issue of shifting or not shifting without the data necessary, FERPA laws make compiling this type of data not only difficult, but also illegal. So it's, so it is here in these intentions, in these instances of cohorts that teachers often have a better understanding of how classrooms should be staffed and building principals for the simple reason that they are in the classroom every single day. And in addressing Mr. Chartre, what Mr. Chartre spoke about at the beginning, I'll start by saying that I can't put it better than he did. Educators want to do what's best for kids, and part of this is supporting students in their emotional well-being. However, what I can add is that having attended this weekend's Fusion, Future Vision Summit, what are we going to call it, is that what we call it?
Future search.
Okay. For the district, with numerous members of the community, the thing that came up again and again is helping students deal with stress, helping them with their emotional well-being, helping them navigate school in a way that allows them to be most successful. So as the board moves forward, the addition of personnel and the addition of funding for these types of programs needed to meet this goal could become a priority. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. So questions and comments may be shared with the board via email. And if we are going to meet on the 26th, it's helpful to have those questions a couple of days in advance so that we can share them out to the appropriate administrators. If we do not meet on the 26th, we would need questions and comments through Tuesday, April 2nd, because we would be meeting on Thursday, April 4th. So just whenever we're meeting and, and you send a question into us, try to have that a couple of days before so that we have time to get it out to the appropriate person. With that, I thank you again for being a part of the school board budget process, and good night.